This is an interview with Harry Blizzard, founding member of the Board of Trustees of Elgin Community College, who is currently a resident of Elgin, Illinois. This interview is being conducted on Thursday, February 4th, 2016, at Elgin Community College. The interviewer is Polly Nash. Welcome.
Thank you.
To start out, can you tell us a little bit about your own background? When and where you were born and raised? Maybe some about your family and your education?
Sure. I was born in a small town in northwestern Iowa. And a lot of people think a small town is five, 10,000. This is a real small town. Its population was at its peak was 1,150. And it was a center of business in the area. And it was there because it was the intersection of two railroads. The Milwaukee went from Des Moines to Okoboji. And the other was the Illinois Central went from Chicago to Sioux City. So that was a big reason why people went there, because it was two railroads back before there were cars.
That's why the railroads intersected?
Mm-hmm, right at our town. And...
And what was the name of your town?
Fonda, F-O-N-D-A.
Okay.
Yeah. It was named after a city or a small town in upper New York State. But anyway, my grandfather came there to start his store. And he had an option of several towns, but he was looking at Fonda because of the two railroads. And but he didn't like Spencer, Iowa, which was a town probably five to 10 times bigger than Fonda. And he decided that he would pick the railroad town. And that was probably a mistake with the...
And what was your grandfather's name?
Harry A. Blizzard.
Okay.
And then my father was Harold B. Blizzard. And I'm Harry B. Blizzard. And the B. is for my grandmother's maiden name, Butler.
Thank you.
So, but anyway, he... My grandfather was in the clothing business in southeastern Iowa. And he wanted to go out on his own. So he picked Fonda. Moved there in 1895. My dad was born there in Fonda in 1896. And, well, they really did well in the little community. Did grow. And business was good. And the highways were not there yet, but they were starting to build roads. So it was all right. And then he married my mother, who was a schoolteacher. And he met her from Fonda. And we... I have one... I had one sister. So she was two years older than I.
And when were you born?
And so we grew up in Fonda and everything. And of course, we were growing up. But the interesting thing is, we were growing up during the Depression. But we didn't know there was a Depression, we as children, except for two things happened during that time. One, we always wondered why we couldn't go on a little vacation. And Dad said, "No, we just don't have the money to do that." Well, one day, my mother got a letter from Wyoming, and the mail opened up as a check for $50 that was inheritance from some relative of hers she didn't even know. My folks took that $50. And we took Grandpa's old '28 Chevy, and we headed north to northern Minnesota and southern Canada. And on that $50, we were able to do a whole two-week trip.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Bought the gas, stayed in little homes, because they didn't have anything back then. But anyway, that was one reason why I knew there was a Depression. The other was my closest friends. He... His father was a plumber. And there was just no work for plumbers, especially in building new houses or anything. And he really was suffering. So I was over to his house one day. And the lights went out. And Murk, he says, "Oh, wait a minute. I gotta get a quarter and put it out in the electric meter." And I thought, wow. See, they... He... His father could not pay the electric bill. So they said in those days, "Those that can't will put a quarter meter in." You put a quarter and you get 25 cents worth of electricity.
And do you remember how long that would last?
It lasted quite a while back in those days, but still had to do. So that was the first one. Then a few days later, he says, "Let's go for a walk. Grab one of those pails over there and let's go for a walk." "Where we going?" "Out on the railroad." "Okay." We spent a lot of time going up and down the railroads and so on. And he went to where there was a curve. And what he was doing was hoping that a full coal train would have gone by. And on the curve, on the fast, some would have fallen off. And sure enough, we got there and there was enough coal that we picked up and took that back to his house. And that's how they kept warm. And those were the only two things that I could remember. And of course, the '30s were terrible for a lot of people.
Now, did your dad have the clothing store too that your grandfather had?
Yes. My dad, he went... He graduated from high school in '15 and went to Iowa State for one year. Then he transferred to Drake. And then he came home and he got drafted into the First World War. And then when he came home, he met mother and got married. So... And then he worked all his life with his father in the clothing store. And I worked there for a while after I graduated from high school. Well, I'll tell you about that a little bit. They put me in school too early. And I was only 16 when I graduated from high school. And even though I turned 17 shortly, I decided that I didn't want to go to college because I didn't know what I wanted to do. And they said they wanted me to go to the little town of Storm Lake where Buena Vista College is, still there, nice little school. And I said, "I don't want to go." And so Dad says, "Well, you have to get a job. You just can't do that." "Well, I'll get a job." So I got a job at a gas station. And I worked the gas station for a long time. And then it was about a year, a little less. And I went to... Or Dad came over. And he came to me that morning and says, "I want you to quit your job." I said, "Why?" "I want you to come work at the store." I said, "Well, why? You don't need any help." And he says, "Yes, I do." His longtime friend, who he used to double date with when mother and he were going together. He was a real close friend. And he was having trouble with drinking. And he really became an alcoholic. And Dad says, "I just can't have that in my store." So it was very difficult to tell his very best friend he had to fire him. And so I worked there until I became 18. And when I became 18, after... Well, back up just a little. I... During when I was in high school, I took an exam, which was an Army exam. They have what they call the AR... Army Reserve Training Program, where they would take young people. And this is during the war, in the '44, '40. Yeah. And I would go to college and start out. And they all wanted us to take engineering. And so I said, "Boy, that's my dream." And I passed. And so I went to take my physical. Well, I went to take my physical three times. And I never passed because my eyes were bad. And an interesting little story there. And the second time I took a physical there, they had a break at just at the midpoint of the exam for lunch. And I came back from lunch early. I went over there and I memorized this eye chart. And I memorized the eye chart. And so I whipped right through that one. And the guy that did it was... He went over and talked to one of the doctors over there. And the doctor says, "Tell that boy to come over." And he says, "How you doing?" And I says, "Well, okay. Okay, I want you to read that one over here." I couldn't even hardly see it. He says, "I thought so. You probably little tricked us." And I said, "Well, I wanted to get in." And it seemed like me having glasses wasn't that difficult. Well, I tell you that story because then I went home and, as I told you, worked with my dad. Then at 18, back then, I became draft eligible. And I immediately got drafted. And so I had to go up for a physical. I thought, "Well, they'll never take me." Bingo. "You're fine." And I was in. And I was in a hurry. So, well, anyway, that took care of me. And that's how I got into the Army.
Okay. Before we go into the Army, because I'd like to hear about your experiences there, do you want to reflect a little bit about Fonda and how it has changed?
Sure. Fonda was a center of, because of the railroads and all that, a center of all needs for the farmers. They would come from at least 10 miles in each direction. And I have a list here of things. And I want to tell you about why Fonda is not what it used to be. It... Back in 1950, I think it reached its zenith. It really was a busy place. And I have a list here of what was in our little town. We had two railroads, six passenger trains per day. There were two schools, K through 12, two. And we had three doctors, two dentists, two veterinarians, two lawyers, six grocery stores, three hardware stores, five restaurants, one movie theater, three auto dealers, Chevy, Ford, and Chrysler, two farming companies, a newspaper, four churches, two pharmacies, two meat lockers, which is a big thing out there. You freeze your meat and keep it. Two barbers, two men's clothing stores, one of which was my father's. A public swimming pool, a golf course, a blacksmith, four gas stations, two grain elevators, a dry cleaner, a bank, post office, state liquor store, and four taverns, and two women's stores.
Same number of taverns as churches?
Yeah. I think that grew a little more the other way. But that's 72 different organizations. So, I mean, the town was bustling. We had everything. Now, go back to present, 2016. I haven't been there lately, but I have heard that, number one, that they... The school, when I went to it as kindergarten, I was only eight years old. The school was very, very nice. The school's gone. They tore it down. There is no school in Fonda, none at all, none at all. They have to go to another town. And so what's left? Well, there's only one railroad. One, they tore up the tracks. And there's only one train that comes through, and it's a freight train. So all that good stuff that was left is a grocery store, two taverns they hang in, and one restaurant, two churches. We lost two churches. The pool and the golf... Pool, swimming pool and the golf place is still there. One grain elevator, a bank, and a post office. Now, you see, that went from 72 down to 12. Well, now, back in 1950, the land was worth about 500 an acre. Now, the land is worth from 5,000 to 8,000 an acre. Well, you know, you think, "Well, that's good." But no, it's not good. Because the thing is, back in 1950, it took two men to farm 160 acres, which is a quarter section. And now, two men with the equipment they have can farm between 640 and 1,000 acres. Well, you're less than one-fifth the number of people that are farming around. And there was... And strictly, the town was for the farmers. And what's left, it's down to population of about 400. And they're all retired farmers. So now, that is... That is real, real bad. They tried sometime after the war to get manufacturing to come. They didn't try hard enough. If they would have, maybe that would have helped. But just the farming, it's so successful. And if you have some of that land, it's a good way to make a living. But it doesn't take many of them to do it. So that's a problem that's not unique to Fonda. That's the same all through the Midwest. Here in Illinois, and Minnesota, and Wisconsin, it's all the same. So anyway, there you go.
Good, thank you. So we were talking about your military career and how at first you passed the written but failed the eye exam. And then when you were drafted, you cast everything with flying colors. So you're in the military. Is that... And you talked about engineering. Can you talk about the relationship between your military career and your interest in engineering?
Well, I think more was I matured considerably in the year and a half I was in the military. And I did know that I wanted to be an outside person and I wanted to do civil engineering. So I did know that. And a lot of that came from my high school math teacher, who was also the coach of all athletics and principal of the high school and everything. I was very impressed with him. And he was a civil engineer. And so I think I... Yes, I decided then that that was good. It was sort of an interesting story when I went into... And the first day I was there, I got me fatigues. And I got called and he said, "You go over there." "What am I going to do?" "You're going to peel potatoes." Well, that's what every... You see that as a classic of what you do when you get into the Army. But the peeling potatoes, then, they have a machine that actually peeled them. But then they wouldn't... In the eyes, they had to have it. So you'd take the potato and peel it up. Oh, anyway, I did that one day. I did it for a second day. All of a sudden, a sergeant came in and said, "Is a guy named Blizzard here?" Yeah, I said, "Good. The captain wants to see you." I don't know. Why would the captain want to see me? And I... So I went in there and I didn't know how to salute. And I gave it the old try. And he says, "Well, sit down, son." And I says, "How would you like to stay here at Fort Snelling in Minnesota and work here for us?" And I said, "Well, I'm on a 25-person roster, and I'm getting to be friendly with all of them. I'd probably prefer to go with them." "Well, you're not going. You're staying here." And I says, "Oh, what have you got in mind?" And he says, "Well, we're going to have you work in the clothing warehouse." He saw that my dad had a clothing store. But that was only part of it. He also had the exams that we take. And this is like an IQ. And it's almost on the same basis. 55 is almost perfect. Below 100 is not good. And so they picked everybody who was 125 or up. In fact, we had one or two who were 150 and they're geniuses. But anyway, that's how I happened to stay in Fort Snelling. And I... It turned out that was the best thing it could have had. I learned things. And I made corporal there in the year and a half. And it was just loads of fun. And I also had my first experience of ever even seeing or anything about a... Or hearing of a symphony orchestra, which I can tell you about a little bit later. But that's my Army career.
So how did that tie into engineering and your interest in engineering?
Well, it didn't directly. But I just... I think it was more I matured. And I just had a feeling this is what I wanted to do. I was good at math and stuff, so that was where I should have been.
So after the military, did you go on to collegiate work?
Well, yes. I got out just before Christmas. And I wanted to start at Iowa State in the fall.
And that was what year?
19... Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Yeah, 1947. And then a little problem came up. Well, I got a job with a construction company. And I went out to central Washington, where they were building a large dam for irrigation purposes. And I learned to survey there. It was very helpful for me. And then I really knew I was really going to go there. So I applied for Iowa State. And I get a note that says, "You can't come in as a freshman because you do not have the qualifications you need." And I says, "Well, I do..." "Well, you have to take this math course that you didn't have. And then if you go, that'll take a year." And I said, "No, no, 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 I can't do that." He says, "Well, we have a way you can take care of that." The University of Nebraska has the finest... What do I call it? They... The finest, when you take by yourself.
Oh, independent study?
That's the word I was trying to come up with. And so I quickly signed up for that. And I said, "Well, you have to have a professional teacher supervise you." And it happened to my landlady out in Washington. She was a teacher. And so she said, "Sure, she'd do it." And so I started. And we were working 60 hours a week. And this course, I had to get done in six weeks. And it was a six-month course for most people. And I decided then, "This is not going to work." So I told my boss, "I had to quit to go home and get ready to go to college and get this done." So I had a friend drive me to Spokane, get on an airplane, which I'd never been on before, and flew to Minneapolis. My parents came and got me. And I spent the rest, another four or five weeks every day studying. And I had a minister's daughter. My wife was also qualified for doing it. So I sent it all in. And I was waiting and waiting. And I called them. "How's it going?" "We're processing it." And I says, "Well, I got to get this pretty soon." And it got within two weeks of when it was... We were ready to start freshman classes. And I finally... They finally said, "Yes, we received it. You're okay." Well, then I had to go down and find a place to stay, which you couldn't then because all the GIs were going to college. There was no place to stay. So I finally found a place where there were five others down in the basement, just packed in it. So I did get a stay. And then I got in all right. So that was a nip and tuck, and I was so glad. And that started my college career.
Right. And so after Iowa State, or what did you major in at?
Well, civil engineering. And I was able to stick to their schedule. And they gave a couple credits to GIs. So that kept the things going a little easier. So it was all great. I got three years of GI bill that paid for everything. So the fourth year, I had to pay for myself. So I had to prepare for that. So I applied for a scholarship and got it. And it was for $300 back then in 1948 or '49. That was a lot of money. And it was very much appreciated. And so I got through all right. And I worked all the time. I worked in the clothing store, Joseph's Men's Shop. And then I also delivered newspapers. The university... Well, then it was a college. The college had a daily paper, five days a week. And I deliver it. And I went mostly into the area where the fraternities and sororities were. And I'd leave 25 at a time. And I made a lot of money there. So I left college and I had 600 bucks cash.
So no student debt?
No.
That they didn't have?
No debt at all. And but now, I've been walking all the time. I never had a car in my life. So I said, "I've got to get a car." So Dad says, "Well, he gave me 600, my 600, and put it together. And we went to the bank and they gave me 600, local bank, one of them that I just told you is still there." And so I had 1,800 bucks. And I was able to buy a brand-new Chevy coupe for $1,800. But I couldn't find one. Korean War was on. 1951, the Korean War was on. It was just very difficult to get a car. So I had a professor who said, "I could help you out." He lived in Boone, Iowa, right next to Ames. And he says, "That Chevy dealer owes me. I'll go over and tell him he's got to get you one." Boy, just in a few days, I had this beautiful little car. And I was off and running. Well, I had to get a job now, right? And they were interviewing. And I would interview some. And I said, "No, I don't think I'm interested in..." Finally, this one came. And it was outdoor. And I liked the... I liked the person. The head of the company came out to interview, who was also a graduate of Iowa State in civil engineering. So it was a company called Muncie Construction Company from Muncie, Indiana. And off I went with my new little car to Muncie and started right there. And they built electrical substations and high-voltage power lines. And I worked four years there and was doing all right. But what I probably would say the best thing that happened is that's where I met my wife, Phyllis. She was considerably younger than me. So I had... I just met her then and didn't see her again for three or four or five years. And, well, anyway, that's another story.
That's another story.
But it was great. But then came a realization that electrical wasn't my key. I wanted to do civil work. So I decided I'd quit. And I went up... Northern Indiana was just building their toll road across the northern part of the state, which is I-80. And so I went up there and I found a guy that was doing just what I thought I would like to do. So I took the job. And when I told my best friend that we worked with, I says, "Well, I'm leaving and I'm going up there and take this job." And they said, "They're going to hold me down and say, 'You can't give this job up to go working on something that you don't even know lasts six months.'" I says, "Well, I'm not married. I can do this." And so I did. I bought a brand-new trailer. And so I'd have something that I knew I'd be traveling. And I didn't want to go into different people's houses all the time. So I had my own, which was real nice. And off I went. But they said, "You're nuts." I had... With Muncie Construction, I was finally in charge of substation bidding and supervision. And I had a car and everything. And I had nothing, no guarantees of anything, even guarantees of work for a full year. But it was the right thing to do. And if I had been a married person, I couldn't have done it. But I could take the risk because I was... But I could take the risk because I was all by myself. And it worked out. And I worked for that guy for five years.
So you were working in northern Indiana at that time?
Yeah. And then, now we're gonna get out of there to, to Illinois. When we were just finishing up, I worked about six or seven different projects in northern Illinois. He said, "Well, Illinois is gonna build even more. They're got a system that's gonna more be three times what the Indiana one was." So I want you to go over there and start checking when the bidding is coming out and, and see who the successful contractors are and, and get the business going over there, which I did. My first job was now to select where shall I go to live. So I look at the map to where the toll road must go. And as you know, most, that it goes from the Indiana border to the Wisconsin border. It goes from Oak Brook to Aurora. And it goes to, from O'Hare to Rockford to Bulloid. And I'm looking at the map and I don't know much about any of this.
Because you've never lived in Illinois.
Not much. And I said, "Well, it looks like Elgin is, is a good location. It's, it's, uh, out far enough." And so I picked it. And so I looked for a place to bring my trailer and I found...
So you were still living in the trailer?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I was still single. And I was waiting for my wife to grow up. We were starting to date about then, I think. Well, she was a nurse's training in Washington DC at the time. But, so I had to find a place to park my, my trailer. I had to have telephone. That was key. They weren't ever wearing some of these trailer parks. And so I found it and it's right on McLean Boulevard and it's still there today. It's called Bushy Trailer Park. I lived there from fall of, of fifty-six until I, until I was, we were married in, in February of fifty-nine. So I lived there all, a long time. And it was a great place for me to be.
It fit the bill.
Well, it was, it was just right. Now I had to get enough work and I was lucky enough to get a lot of contracts with the contractors.
So you worked for different contractors?
Yes. Uh, that, yes. Well, yeah, that's, that's true. And we worked all the way from Libertyville in the north to Alsup in the south and to Naperville and that way on that leg. And we didn't work much west here, but we worked here at Elgin and a lot of it around O'Hare and an awful lot up north. So we had, uh, we had an average of twenty people working. At the very peak, we had forty people working for us. And I was doing it all myself. My boss didn't come over very often. He was busy. I don't know, doing something.
So what were some of your favorite projects?
Well, well, all of the toll road and all. The toll road I thought would be done in, we built it in two years, which is a miracle. And, uh, but I, I never stopped. For the next thirty years, I still continued working. They always, always had jobs. So it was, that's a good job for me. And then, then, then O'Hare Field came. And I started that in the fall of fifty-eight. And it was there, it was my last job on April first in nineteen ninety. So it just lasted forever. And those, those were, now, but my very favorite job wasn't in construction. It was in preliminary design surveys where we would go out and we would locate a road and, and almost in all cases, that would be interstate highway. And we would then take topography and, and all elevations and so that the engineers could, could design the road. But we located it and put control out there that they could recover. And so that was my favorite because you, it was so quiet. You could be out there and you're out in the cornfields or anything and no traffic. We're, we're no...
Because it's before.
Where all these other places, just traffic everywhere. So this was, this is why it was so much fun. And in nineteen sixty-five, I got two, three jobs in southern Illinois. And they were gonna take all the summer or more. And I, Phyllis and I had three little girls by that time in sixty-five. And so I moved us all down. And we, we lived down in Wyamah, Illinois and Metropolis. Way down there. And, and doing those design surveys were a lot of fun, a lot of fun. Because we were, we were our own bosses. When you were working for contractors, they, they would call me and, and say, "I want you there," and went, "Oh, I need you right now." And you don't have that. You can do what you want and schedule. So, so that was my favorite. But my bread and butter was always the construction jobs.
If you don't mind, could we focus your attention on the Elgin area? And we know why you decided to come here. Can you describe what Elgin was like when you came here? Didn't you say it was nineteen fifty-six?
Yeah. Well, none of the civic center was there then, of course. Elgin was, was then a leading town for, for retail sales. They, they came from everywhere to buy. You know, we had four major department stores with Speeds and Ackermann's and Sears and Penny's and one called Block &amp; Cool, which was a very classy thing. I mean, it was a, it was a really a going town. Well, it, it just was a, a good place. They brought, they established this town back in, I don't know, eighteen thirties because it was a good location. It's still a good location. Today, it's a, it's a fine location because it's, it's got the railroad to go to town in. It's got the expressways to go whichever way you want. It's, it's just a great location. Here, I'm still a bachelor and so I haven't time to do much cooking. And so I'd have to find a place to eat in the evening, usually after five-thirty or six here. So you know where the best place to eat in town was in those days? The basement of the YWCA. Anybody who was my age will tell you that was the place to eat. The women there were just amazing. And the pies they made were out of this world. But they're, but they, they had roast beef one time and roast pork the next and then chicken the next and...
Good home cooking?
Oh, my gosh, yes. It was just great. So that, that's, that's a memory of, of the old times. And Elgin has changed an awful lot, yeah.
Right. So when you came here, when you moved here, the college was part of the school district, the Elgin School District?
Yes.
And, um, and then at some point, um, the, in nineteen sixty-five, the community college system in Illinois was formed.
Yes, that is true.
Did you know about the college before that? Before they...
Oh, yes, I knew about it. But I knew that it was in a very, a bunch of houses along Chicago Street. One of them was called Renner Hall. And I knew all that. But, and I knew that it was something that was going to grow. And then when, when this came about, uh, well, here's how it went. It was nineteen sixty-five and, uh, they, we had to have a board established for this area which the district, and that was called Five-O-Nine then. And so we had to have a, a new board of directors. And the board of the U forty-six said, "Well, let's, let's be proactive. Let's select seven people and run them as a, as a group." They worked together and, and everything. And they didn't have any trouble at all in getting the, the first six of those seven. And a friend of mine who lives out near us, he was on the board at the time. And he says, "Well, I'll bet you Harry Blizzard would like to do this. And I think he'd be good." And so they, they asked me if I wanted to run for the board. And I said, "Yeah, I think I would." And so they selected me. And really, it was a risk on their part because all the rest of them were very well-known in the community. Nobody knew me. See, I had no business in Elgin. All my business was to the east of us and with contractors and engineering firms.
But you ran as a slate?
Yes, we did.
And there were, there were, I think there were twenty-two people running for the board?
Oh, yeah. I thought it was even more than that, but it was a good number. It was, it was a real contest. But we, we worked hard. We wanted to be first on the list, the seven of us. And to do that, you had to be first to sign up down in Geneva. So we went down there and started saying, standing in front of the door two days before they opened it. So I stayed day and night. And got clear close to the end. And I won't tell you who it was, but a lady who was running for it. We were ready to go in. She just walked up, pushed herself up and walked in first. Well, I'm happy to say she didn't get elected. But we were still together and, uh, and we all worked. And I, but I, I didn't know people, so I had, I did some menial tasks maybe and they were really hitting all the people they know.
I have a picture of the, the founding board and I wondered if you might talk about each of those individuals.
Well, yes. I, I, I did not really know any of these people until, I knew of them, but... First of all, there's Bob Hofer here. And Bob, of course, was a dynamo and, uh, really a, a number-one philanthropist in the, in the city and he just is...
And he had a company?
Hofer Plastics, which is a huge employer down in south Elgin. And then there was John Eschelman. John, uh, John and I are the only ones that are still alive. Uh, he was a banker, worked for First National Bank and other things. He was, he's a fine man. Next is Richard Gromer. Dick Gromer, for those who have been around a long time, had a super, supermarket grocery store, Gromer's, out in the west. And he had six others until things didn't go so good for him. And then next was Joe McCarthy, is an attorney who became a judge. He's, he's just a delightful guy. And then, next then was Paul Bolger. Paul was a union official for the carpenters' union of Fox Valley. And he was just, just a great guy. And then there were, then Frida Simon. Frida was Dr. Simon's wife. And she, she, she knew everybody. And actually, she's the one that worked and was probably most successful in getting us elected. She has a doctor's degree from University of Chicago. I never did fully understand what it meant, but I was impressed by it. And so, so we, we all got elected.
There's such a variety of skill sets there.
They, they took, they, they did the things that were, were good, yeah. So, yeah, good memories.
In thinking about the founding board and all the things that you had to do at the very beginning of this separation of Elgin Community College from the school district?
Well, we were fortunate that Gil Renner was president of the, of the college when it was under the, the U forty-six. And he was, in fact, he started in, I think, late forties. And he, he is just a delightful person and easy to work with. And, and so it was, it was fun to work with him and he could see what's going on. Uh, we did a lot of things. We knew, eventually we'd be able to have a campus somewhere when the state approved it. And that didn't happen till, well, it, it was, it was just getting, they were slow getting it started and funding. It's a, it's a problem that's still existing.
Because you had to go through various classes, class two, to get to class one, where there was actually, would be funding from the state?
No, the, the, the state had a big budget for twenty, twenty-eight or nine colleges in Illinois. And they all wanted money and they all wanted to build. So it was a very, very active time. But anyway, getting back a little bit, we, we did a lot of things. Channing Y, which was relatively new then. We talked them into excavating their basement and putting four or five classrooms in the basement of the Channing Y. We put a library in the basement of the temple, the...
Masonic, Masonic Temple?
Masonic Temple. And we did another thing, I think the cutest one we did, we had just starting a nursing program. And we had no place to do it, so we rented, at least for a while, a, a little church that was right next to the high school. Do you know where I'm talking about?
Yes.
And the lady who was in charge of it, she's Margaret, Margaret? I can't think of the last name.
Gabler?
Gabler, there you go. She was so thrilled. She says, "Come on, I wanna show you what we've got." We go, "One much bigger than this room." Had one or two beds and a, and a fake person in it. She, that was just unbelievable, delightful for her. She's so excited. And as time went on, she was constantly letting us know that her students would take the exam and they would do better than the four-year students from northern Illinois. And I understand that still exists today, that these, the kids would, wow, the difference in the facilities is amazing. So, but that was, that was all, that was interesting. But then we, we, we said, "Well, we've got to find a, a place where we could build a, a new campus." And so we started looking, but we didn't have to look very long. And it was evident that there was gonna be about two-hundred-and-fifty acres available from the mental health, that they don't need it anymore. They, they used to use it for their five thousand inmates, which now it's a hundred and fifty. But they had to have something to do so that they worked the farms and stuff. Well, anyway, they didn't need it anymore. Well, Elgin decided they wanted, City of Elgin. Well, we said, "We really need this. What are you gonna do with it?" "We wanna build a golf course." And I said, "Well, you don't need all this, do you?" And so we, we said, "Well, we need about ninety-five or..." And so we said, well, we need about ninety-five or a hundred acres. And I said, we need it right here where it is today. And you can have all the rest. They got a, we got this, and they got a hundred-and-sixty or eighty, I forget. And I said, well, that's really a good deal for us because we have this great location and we have this golf course to give us beautiful landscaping all around. Doesn't cost us anything. And that way, that way, it's the way it was. It was very good. And, well, then that's when we get started.
So then you had to select an architectural firm?
The first thing we did was we went out and sold bonds, five million dollars worth of bonds. And we went down to Chicago, all this, where they opened the bids on. And we got it for two and a quarter percent. Never had they given bonds that low before. So we were just thrilled. So we immediately took the five million and invested it in a very safe bond of some sort. I don't remember anymore. But we were making money then off of our five million. In fact, we, before we had to use up the five million, we had four-hundred-thousand extra money, which we'll tell about later. But so now we had to decide, well, we had been going on a lot of trips and we'd seen a lot of good ones, good schools and some not so good. The one we liked the best was Loraine, Ohio. And the reason for it was they had separate buildings, but they were all connected. They were connected with first-class tunnels that were nice. And they were right along the lake where it gets so cold and everything. So you could go from, and never leave. So you could put your coats away and go anywhere. So that was one thing we said, we got to have the same. We got to have it so the buildings are connected. And so then we decided to, we interviewed architects. And it was very evident real quick that the best fit for us was Perkins and Will. Perkins and Will was a Chicago firm, still is today, one of the finest, still in the country, very, very big. And they were to be the lead ones. But then their second, they didn't want to do all the work. They just wanted to do the creative part. And then some of the other. And all the real hard work, they wanted to lend out to a local firm. And it was a firm in Geneva. Can't remember it anymore. But they were very good and they, together, they started. And they put a man named Will Quam, young guy, dynamo. There's three or four things that are really interesting about Will. We told him first, we wanted to have it so the buildings would be connected. We don't want, have to go outside and coats off, coats on and all that stuff. He said, well, we'll take care of that. And then he showed us a preliminary design that all of the building that he's designing would be on a twenty-two-foot squares, columns every twenty-two feet. And we looked at it, well, yeah, but you've got twenty-two-foot wide hallways. That's such a waste. We could have a lot of other classes. And he says, well, you've got to trust me here. He says, we'll go down to Wabonce, we just finished their first one. And we'll go there during a class change. And we went, we stood in the hall. It was like you were driving to O'Hare and everybody was shuffling each other around. It was a disaster. We never again questioned him on that width of it. And today, or yesterday when I was here, I walked all those halls and they're still there. And they're still performing exactly the way he wanted them to. And then, two more things with Will. When they got ready to open the building, he told them what kind of signs he wanted them to identify them and everything. And they said, okay, we'll put them up. Hello? He says, no, you won't. I will put them up. I will put every one of those up. I want them to be in the right place so they'll look right. Okay, so he did. And we thought, well, that's nice. And then we had this four-hundred-thousand. The state would not come through with enough money that we could build what we had designed, the Perkins Will, which was a swimming pool and two, at that time you could have a men's and a women's gymnasium and a wrestling room. We had all that designed and we just couldn't build it. Well, here we had this beautiful building going up and there's not even a gymnasium out here for, you just cannot not have a gymnasium for a college. So we took this four-hundred-thousand that we had saved up. And we all agreed that we'd get a local contractor. We had three good ones that were good. We talked to them and see what kind of place they were put. Will Quam heard about that and I thought he was going to blow his top. He says, don't you dare do that. You're going to put up a tin box of a gymnasium and ruin my whole design I have here? And I said, well, Will, we can't afford you. We only got four-hundred grand. And it'll take that to do it. We can't afford to pay you. Yes, you can. I will do the whole thing for you for five thousand dollars. And I'll guarantee you can get it built for four-hundred. And he designed that. And if you remember, it was, you hardly knew what it was, people, because it was buried in the ground and they had those berms up. And then each corner had that architectural entrance. It was really nice. Parts of it are still there. But that was Will.
So that the first part of the campus was built. You had what they called A building? And so that housed what?
Well, everything.
Everything?
Well, yeah. What do they call the B building, where the administrative office is? Well, it was only partway. Later on, we added there. And then the other wing on the far side, which was auditoriums for chemistry and biology.
Right, the biology and the math.
We also pushed out that way and expanded well. Since then, shoved it out another notch or two. But yes, it was everything. I mean, areas were, I mean, everything was there. We had room.
With very little exception, that whole concept of the connectivity of the campus is still in place. We still, we do have some buildings that are online.
It's only because those buildings were in the industrial area. But even some of them were, like the first one we built was, not built, we bought, rented first, was the nursing and plastics and nursing and something else we had in there. And then eventually-
North Annex, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I forget what we called it. And but that, but that one is now connected because you can go across the road and then go over. There's just that. Another, the other one that was purchased long since I was around, that's across the street from one of them. And then the two that they redid so beautifully, can't get to those. But, oh, they're nice.
Yes. So you served on the board from nineteen sixty-six to nineteen seventy-eight?
Yep.
And so you were, you worked with three different presidents?
Sure did.
Mr. Renner, Dr. Apple and Dr. Hopkins?
Yes, they were all just perfect for the times they were there. Gil was just, you knew him, I think, didn't you?
I met him, yes.
Jack, did you know him?
Yep.
He's just a great guy. And I was so sad when he said he wanted to retire, but he was ready to quit. But he was the perfect person to have start. Then we had Bob Apple that was hired and was here for four years. And he was at the right time too because there were no regulations or rules or anything. And he put together everything so that his successor would have something that was written down and was the law. And so he did well. He left, he had a little few problems, but most of them do. And but I got to see him and talk to him for a long time, just two, well, two or three years ago before he died. He was a very nice person. Then Mark Hopkins was the exact opposite of those other two. He's a dynamo. You all know him so well. But he, he got a lot of people that really liked him against a lot of people that didn't like him because he was, he was very, very forceful. But I think he was here at the right time, but he had a very difficult time the last couple of years. But it's interesting that he left here after six years, I believe. And that was after I was gone. And went to South Carolina where he took over a private two-year school and converted it to a four-year school. And then he started three other universities. One in India, one in California, and I forget where the third one is. And then he has a business that now his daughter is running where he finds qualified foreign students. So there's some schools are always looking to diversify their enrollment. And they can't get them sometimes, and he gets them for them. That's been a good business for him. And he has now gone into, well, he writes a weekly newspaper article that's published in two-hundred newspapers. He also is on his second novel, which is, both of them were about the Civil War. So anyway, he left and, well, he did, he did fine here. He was very successful when he left.
Right, thank you. There came a time when the college needed to start a foundation, a foundation to solicit external funding. And I know you've been involved in it. Can you describe your involvement?
Yes, I was probably on it right away because I was on the board when it started. But anyway, I was not as optimistic as I should have been probably because my theory was that it's difficult to ask for money for an organization that's supposed to be supported by the state of Illinois and by your real estate taxes. He said, well, my Illinois taxes are supposed to pay for this and the real estate tax. Now you want me to pay more? I said, that's a tough sale. And it was, it was, and still is. And, well, I'll say that the staff that's here now is unbelievable. She is so good and she is, I just saw on my communication that they're in their first month of the year and they brought in four-hundred-thousand dollars already in the first month. When it started, the four-hundred-thousand was beyond belief for five years.
Right.
And so it's, it's an organization that has done some great things because, of course, a lot of it is scholarships. But they are, there's always things in a school like this that funds weren't available for. And you just say, well, do you really need this? Well, yeah, we need it, but we don't, we don't want to use the tax money and so on. But you've got to have that available to make a school just even, even better. I just walked down the hallway down here, which is, oh, it must be three-hundred feet long, wide hallway. I'm just looking, wow, I think this whole hallway ought to have some art in it of some sort, either murals on the wall or something. I mean, those kind of things you can do with extra money. There are many others that are really more important. Sometimes they get an expensive program started that they didn't think they could afford the equipment. So it's been very good, very successful. I still am an emeritus on that board. I don't go anymore.
Can you tell us a little bit about the naming of the Blizzard Theater?
Well, of course, I gave considerable money at one time. And because I felt that, well, I love the place and that's where my spare money ought to go. So I gave it. And then later on, when Michael Shirley was president of the, he decided, we've got to name this thing. And so he came, I said, we want to name the auditorium after you. And Phyllis said, oh, no. I says, that's just craziness because that ought to be named after Dean Chipman. And because Dean Chipman did so much. I mean, you could talk a whole day on what he's done in this community. And they said, no, we've named the street out there that goes to it after him. And I said, well, well, and then Phyllis says, no, she didn't think you ought to do that. Well, this went on for two years. And I think they, they must have talked to her five, six times. I think they finally wore her out. But we've been there, we go there every month or two. And we never go in there that she doesn't say, well, this shouldn't be named this, it should be named Chipman. And I said, well, Phyllis, that's the way it goes. But I think now she's got some pride when our children come back and see that. They're rather proud of that. And I'm proud of them, so it's a tough thing. I have friends that are anonymous givers of great amounts of money and they'll never give again if you tell them who is giving it. And there's advantages that way too. But so anyway, that's what it is.
Before we take a break, and I'd like to take a little break, is there anything else about the college, about any of the, or the foundation that you would like to share? Any anecdotes, any stories?
Well, the foundation, I can't remember the guy's name now. He was a professor at the University of Illinois and he used to commute up here for the, when he was president of the foundation. He was very, I mean, he was dynamo to get this thing started.
Is that Chaswell?
Yes, Chaswell, that's right. And then my next-door neighbor and very, very close friend was Rolustat. And he, he then became chairman of it and ran it for quite some time. Wendy was, he was a very good man until he got a terrible disease that you get, Parkinson's, I guess it is. Anyway, that was very good. As far as the college is concerned itself, I don't see how you guys could want anything better than you've got. It's just magnificent. And I think from what I can tell, Dr. Sam is doing well and is well-liked, I guess. Whatever, it's amazing how they keep getting awards for this, that and the other. It's, it's been a great, great thing. And, uh, I don't think any of us in 65 could, could visualize how these schools are going to be. And to be in this, you know, this, I just never thought this campus would be with the square footies that's here. It's just amazing.
Can we now focus your attention on your love of symphonic music? Can you talk to us about how that, how that started?
You bet. Well, first of all, I have no musical talent at all. I mean, I'm the most non-musical person that ever lived. I couldn't carry a tune, I can't sing, I can't do a thing. I, I tell my wife, I said, why, why, why did, did God make me so, so blasted handsome and, and with no talent? And she, I just set her up. She said, well, you missed out on both. So, so that's the way it goes. But I came from a little town in that part of Iowa. They're probably one of the symphony orchestra within 150 miles. I mean, Des Moines and Sioux City maybe, back in the 40s. And, uh, I didn't know what that was. So here I am in Fort Silling, Minnesota, halfway between Minneapolis, St. Paul, and there's a sign up that says, uh, free tickets to the Minneapolis Symphony Orchestra. And I talked to one of my friends, I says, hey, wanna go? He said, sure. So we get out on that train and went, went in and, uh, I get out and they, they, they give you the tickets here. I said, we'll be in uniform. And I get the tickets, I said, oh, look, we got the best tickets in the house. Why is that? Well, it's on, on the first row. Well, I didn't know the first row was the worst ticket in the house. Okay. So, but it was the best ticket in the house. We sat right here and the stage was up here and about 20 feet off over that way was the podium. Okay. So we're ready and the orchestra's coming and then they quietly, out comes this guy that, woo! He comes trotting out, he's bald as a billiard ball and he gets there and jumps up on that podium and looks around at his orchestra and lifts his baton and he starts. And wow, I just was getting to start of that. He was the most expressive conductor that I've ever seen since. He is, he was unbelievable. His name was Dimitri Metropolis. He went from Minnesota Orchestra later to the New York Philharmonic where he, uh, stayed for a while and then, then he decided to quit or something. But anyway, it, it just absolutely fascinated me that, that he, he, I always thought, well, there are first thing, do, do any of those players pay any attention to him? You bet you they pay attention to him and he, if you, if he doesn't have you, you will know it. And so, so I learned quickly. Well, luckily, Minneapolis Symphony was, had to travel. That's part of their, that's why they get money from, I don't know, wherever they get it. And, uh, so they traveled to Iowa State when I was a freshman. And we had them, uh, oh gosh, we had it in, what's, what was called a state gym. I mean, it was a terrible place to have an orchestra. Acoustics were just lousy. But I said, well, okay. Well, I was so shocked because this is now two years later, because I was off a year. Here comes Dimitri Metropolis again. And they were back for four, all four years, and all four years I heard him and saw him conduct. And so that was, that was the start, that's how it got started. And I, I still feel today that, uh, the young people have their sound and rightly so. But when a 75-piece orchestra is going out full blast, they can make you enough moments that pick you right up. And, uh, we have that in our conductor today at the symphony. He is absolutely amazing. And he, he, he wears himself out at the podium. But anyway, Jack, you go, you know what he is. But, well, anyway, that's how, that's how it started.
So you came to Elgin and, um, what was, what was happening in symphonic music?
Not much. I mean, uh, the symphony was first called something else, I forget now.
I think it was the Civic Orchestra?
The Civic Orchestra, yes, I guess that was it. And they, they were all amateur, but they're okay. I, I wouldn't know that much difference. But those who know or knew it was not so, not so good. I went the first time to the symphony in the new, then, uh, Locken High School Auditorium, which now they have a new auditorium to replace that new one. I went and there were over 150 of us there. And I said, this is not, this is not good. Something's wrong, what's going on here? And, uh, well, things started happening. Doug Steensland started it and he, and he was the perfect person. He was a member of the U46 Music Department and he was the perfect person to get it started. And, uh, and he did a good, great job. Then, then things started to happen. Dean Chipman was, well, I think he was in charge of the symphony at that time. He, um, I think at that time, I think Bob Hanson was just here and he was just very young then. And, uh, they decided they had to do something. And, uh, so they took a chance and contacted Margaret Hillis, who was a world-known conductor of vocal choruses, of Chicago Symphony in one in particular. And, uh, she came out and, and I, I looked it up because I, I wasn't remembering, but the first time she came out was in, then February of 67. And, uh, of course, the Hammonds was not open yet. And then later, she's just, she said she would come out and, and be the music director. And I know she came out, uh, in 1971 and stayed till 1985. It was almost 14 years. And during that time, she accomplished exactly what she said needed to be done. She said, you, you, you must have the amateur players because there, there's a place for them. But if you're going to have a first-class orchestra, you've got to have professional players, people that are making their living because they're, they're good enough. And so we started doing that. Well, prior to that, there's, there's just a group of us, uh, mostly Ash Arnold, President of the Union Bank, and, uh, Ed Brody. He, we three and another guy would sit down and, and Ash's office and say, well, how much do we have to raise for the symphony this year? We'd say, well, maybe 25,000 this year. Well, let's go out and get it. We'd do it and that was the end of it. It's not exactly like that anymore. But we had to, we had to take a step up. And so we knew that we were gonna have to really start bringing in more money. And we had, but we first should get more people to come. And of course, that was helped immensely when the Hammonds was open. But in her 14 years, uh, the orchestra was entirely professional when she left. And, uh, Bob was, uh, worked under her for three or four years as first assistant music director and then associate, they worked together. And, uh, and he took off and then he did so much to, to continue the growth of it. Not only the growth of, of the symphony, but he also was involved in what was then called the Elgin Choral Union. And, uh, then also he established, which I think now is the most remarkable organization in the country, and that's the Elgin Youth Symphony. I just can't believe that he's got 300 and some youngsters that'll commit at least 40 Sunday nights to come and practice. And that's happened. So a lot of things happened with the symphony and that's the good news.
And the, the symphony under Doug Steensland started under the auspices of the college. And so you saw it, um, actually flourish at the beginning with the college and then split off from the college?
Well, Doug Steensland was, assuming it was employed by the U46. When he started it, there was no connection to the college, I don't think, when he started it. But then later on, yes, there was a connection, yeah. We were fortunate to have a guy like him to get it started.
Right.
We grew right along and we just taught our, his first, second, third, brought our, only our fourth music director in, well, already 65 years now, I guess.
Right.
It's amazing.
And so, um, what are your perspectives on, um, our current conductor, our current maestro?
Well, uh, well, let's tell the story. I, when, when Bob decided to, to resign very suddenly and it left us in a terrible position when, I never have understood why he did it and probably never will. But it happened. We had all the advertising out with, with the next season already printed, all with his name on it. So we had to junk it all and start from scratch. And so our first thing was, well, we had to see how we're gonna get a, a new person. So I got to be chairman of that board and we worked for two years. And, uh, first of all, we put the word out and 240 people applied, some of them from overseas even. And, uh, I asked the guy who, who, uh, is a professional at these things, four symphonies, why do we get so many? And he says, well, there's three reasons. One, there are far more conductors than there are orchestras. He said, number two, uh, you, you have a reputation that's, that's national. They know about that Elgin is the superior orchestra. What's three? He says, because you're within 25, 30 miles of Chicago. I said, why is that so important? Because you have this unbelievable pool of professional musicians that you can get as substitutes and your, your orchestra will stay the same quality. So with that, we went and we didn't want, we weren't qualified to narrow it down. And so this company, which, uh, was, belonged to the former executive director of the Chicago Symphony, his mind, his name slips me right now. He had this company and he says, they will narrow us down to about 30. So they cut out 210 of them. And, uh, I said, well, that makes, so we took the 30. And each one of us took six. And we listened to their, what they were doing and visually and so on. We were able to then narrow that down to 12. And with 12, we said, every one of those 12 must come and conduct. And that took a long time, it took two years. This was difficult because we were so, uh, you know, without the boss and, uh, you need a guy to run the show. And so we started hearing them and yes, we, we liked several of them and they were good. And everybody's getting a little antsy here after a year and a half and we only had two to go. And I think it was me that I said, well, what, what about we just chop it off now and select one and go? Well, he says that, that, they wouldn't like that, they would think that's not appropriate. I said, yeah, but we're hurting, we need to have somebody running. And we decided, well, we would qualify that. One person that we were pretty positive, I'm sorry, he could come, but we didn't think that he was probably gonna be very close to, well, from what we've heard. Now we didn't know about this 12th guy. And we knew he, he conducted all over the world, but he never had an orchestra before. Okay, well, can, well, first let's find out, is he really serious? If he is, if he isn't, if he's just playing games, uh, tell him to get lost and then we'll pick it from, we had two or three that were fine. And then call his agent and his agent says, no, he is very serious. And it's because I'm telling him that he has to quit being an itinerant conductor and he needs to have his own orchestra if he's going to go up the ladder. And, uh, I said, so he really would like this? Absolutely. I said, now the big question, he's making a lot of money. We can't afford to pay him at that rate. He says, don't you worry, I'm his manager and if he likes this place, I will see that he will take it and it's something you can afford. So with that, we waited, didn't know for sure what we were gonna get. And he comes and conducts. And we had four of our members out of the 12 were members of the orchestra. So the first thing after we huddle, after we interview him and then huddle is, well, what do you think? He's the one. All four of us unanimous, he's the one. So I said, well, why don't you ask the rest of your players that we, he conducted, what they think too? And we huddled and we all agreed that he, he was, was it. And their, their whole orchestra replied back. It would, uh, it was unanimous that every one of them thought he was the one. And the, the guys who had a lot of experience and this kind of thing, they said, that's never happened that an orchestra could be unanimous on that. So with that, we got him with a three-year contract. And then last year, we extended it for another five years, so we have him for eight. And I, I kid him, I says, I think we ought to start him now for, for another four years on the top of that. But he's very happy to be here and the orchestra loves him. I asked members of the orchestra, okay, he's been here almost three years now and you've been conducted many times by him. You still like him? Oh, yeah. He's even better and we, we, every, every time. Why is he better? Well, one of them said, there's some, this particular piece, I never really liked it. And, uh, then, then he's conducting it? No, I love it. He's getting things out of the music. He's getting things out of the music that most people never got before. So, we are very fortunate to have this. And on top of that, he's a nice kid, he's a kid to me, I think, well, he's in his thirties, thirty-five or six, I think now, that's a child to me. But he's very good with people, and he agrees that he has to spend time going out and meeting people who could be donors. We never have to have him ask for anything, he just goes along and gets to know them, and they, we would never ask anybody for major donations unless they've seen him conduct. That makes a big difference. You understand that, Jack, over there?
And we're talking about Andrew Graham.
You betcha.
Yes. Last, the symphony has had a continued relationship with the city of Elgin. Do you have, from the perspective of past president of the board, board member?
We have a very strong relationship with ECC too. But that dwindled a little, because I think the board later on decided that they shouldn't have such a strong. They paid, they allowed Bob Hanson, two-thirds of his time applied to the symphony, we didn't pay Bob anything at all. So that was good. And they, they did a lot of things, graphic work, graphic artists, and other secretarial stuff. And of course, gave us this corner office over here, until we decided, I guess somebody decided, that we ought to maybe move downtown. And the city was very good in giving us all the space we needed, and it's very nice and a perfect location downtown. And they don't charge us for anything. So they did give us that. And they've always given us the right to secure the best dates before anybody else. There's just a couple things in the spring that had to be done for some of these dance groups, that they have to have the same time in the Hammonds. But generally, they've been very good with that. Then, for ten years or more, they gave us a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars every year. Well, they quit doing that. At the time, well, it was right after the oh-eight financial crash. And we're working strong to get them back to support us a little more again. But they, they're very good. They know, they know that the symphony is an asset for the community. You look at any of their brochures or information that's out, why a company ought to locate in Elgin, they will, they will end it all with, "We have the great symphony orchestra, you don't have to go to Chicago, we have a good music, it's right here." So, those are the things.
Another one of your involvements in the Elgin area is with the Elgin Area Historical Society. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah. Back in seventy-six, our two-hundredth anniversary, they had a buck-a-brick program to raise money, and we raised a hundred thousand dollars. And the city, I don't know if they, yeah, they'd just taken over the old main from the academy. And they didn't know what to do with it, they were thinking about turning it down. And they'd had a fire inside, which wasn't that terrible, but it didn't help in any. But anyway, the hundred thousand, they put on a new roof, the new cube alone, fixed a lot of windows. I think they had to build a stairway, because you require two stairways, you can't have a building that'll hold a hundred and some people with only one stairway. And then they had to think, I don't know if that also got us the elevator or not, I can't remember now. But then, the society didn't have any place for their stuff before. So we gathered up the money, that took floor at a time. The first floor, we got done, got it fixed and got the place open. And the second floor was done, and that's all exhibit area two, and that was done. Then the third floor, which is important, but it's the storage for, you know, all museums probably have ten times as much stored as they have shown. So we got all that stuff up there, and then all the offices and everything else are up there. And so that went floor at a time, and it took ten or twelve years to get to the point where the whole building was open. Well, we have a very good curator, Liz Marston, and she has just done a wonderful job. And we've got, we've got some people that just work so hard, and it's a pleasure to be part of it. And so, and if you people haven't seen it, you ought to go, it's amazing, it's interesting. We get people from out of Elgin to come, and they said, "Wow, this is even interesting, I didn't even know anything about this Elgin Watch Company, that's the biggest exhibit we have." And they said, "We didn't know it was that huge and that big." Well, you know, it's an interesting place, yeah.
And then you've also been involved in the cobblestone houses on West Chicago Street?
Well, that's just something real new. There are only six cobblestone houses in the city of Elgin. There were two more, one just outside, and then they tore them down. And there's one in South Elgin, as you can see very easy, and you go down to South Elgin from this side. But anyway, it's a shame that the one up there has been boarded up, and it's been trashed a little bit. And so, our guys, I don't do any of this anymore, but it's Bill Bruska, George Rowe, decided that we ought to take that over and make that the next project. So they have gotten a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. It's gonna cost half a million to get it fixed up and secure, the foundation has to be checked. But it's a beautiful little building, and you just gotta save those things, and they will use it for public use when they get ready. I was gonna tell you a little story though, this little back. Before we got involved with the symphony, Phyllis and I were involved with an organization called the Fox Valley Music Association. And we brought in, top stuff, we brought in the Chicago Symphony twice to play. And that was after the Hammonds was open. And we also had a lot of good people, which, I can't remember. One in particular I do remember was Van Cliv...
Van Clivern?
Clivern, yeah, Van Clivern. Well, we had him, and it sold out, twelve hundred seats, just like that. So we asked the fire chief, "Could we put two hundred seats on the stage and fill those too?" And he said, "Yes, as long as this, that, and the other." And we had to ask Clivern's agent, "Can we have those people close to..." "Oh, yeah, that's fine." So Dean Chapman was in charge of this at the time. It was two o'clock, Sunday, quarter to two, well, Mr. Clivern wasn't there yet. We got fourteen hundred people in that building. Ten minutes to, not there. Two o'clock, not there. Now, here's where you wanted to have a cellphone, "Where in the hell are you?" But they didn't have them back in those days. Ten minutes after, not there. Panic time, twenty minutes after, all of a sudden, this limousine comes around, screeching around a corner, pulls up, and this big, he's very tall, or was, he just died, jumps out, he's half-dressed, he's dressing himself and putting on his tails, and he runs up, he says, "I don't know," he told them, "they got lost, I think, I don't know what it was." But there he comes out, that's twenty minutes after starting time. He says, "Don't worry, I am ready to go." And he then gets, and then calmly, slowly walks, like he's out right on time. And he plays, and of course, he's, he was a great pianist. But that was, that's the kind of stuff that happens, and you think, well, I don't know what we'd have done, to get up and announce to fourteen hundred, "We'll pay your money back." And they're like, "I don't want my money back, I wanna hear him." What do you do? But, obviously, there's some more things here that you wanted to talk about, wasn't there?
Well, I wanted to, thank you for sharing that story about Van Clivern. You're also involved in the YMCA?
Yeah, YMCA, it's so sad that the, what's the name of the, the street, I can't think of the street.
McLean?
No, 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 the one on the east side, where we tore the thing down.
Oh.
Come on, Jack. Well, anyway, they tore it down.
Channing?
That's such a shame, because it was a good building.
It was Channing.
Channing.
Channing, yeah. So then they suffered a little, and of course, they've expanded the one out on McLean Boulevard, Taylor Y. And I've been involved in that and trying to get it done. But I'll tell you, the greatest thing about the Y is it's, it's one of its sidelines, and that's Camp Edwards. Camp Edwards is up in, thirty miles across the border into Wisconsin, on Lake Buella. It is the nicest place you ever saw. Our kids all spent time there, staying overnight over the week, and you could do it for a whole week. And it's just a delightful place. It's, you feel like you're way up in the Northwoods. And there are two nice homes, one's called the Hoffer Home, and the other's called, not some other name. And it's just fine. Well, they're combined now with the YMCA of Schaumburg, so we've got a lot more people involved. And Camp Edwards is just sold out, they only take so many in a season, and there's fifty or sixty or so every year that don't get it, don't get to go. So they're planning a major expansion up there. And it's about a four-million-dollar project. And I'm gonna get as involved as I can with that, because it is, it is just so great. And they have such a great time. The guy in charge here is very dumb hoe, they have a man who actually runs it up there, he lives down that place, and he's been there about five, six years, and he's good. So we're looking forward to, you'll be hearing about, they'll be looking for somebody. Four million they have to do, it's not easy.
What about your church?
Well, church is very important to our family. First of all, Phyllis is a PK, PK, that's a preacher's kid. Her father's a Methodist minister.
So you are with United Methodist Church?
Well, I didn't have much choice there, it went fine with me. But, and also, when we first went to the church, there was a time when Dr. Rogers was the minister there. The people that I've been around may not know that, Rogers is, he's a dynamo. And so, you sign on a little sheet the first time we went there, that we were, he may be interested, bingo, he was out the next night, and spent two hours with us to make sure we were coming. So we've been there all the time. And Phyllis, she's involved with the quilting, and involved with the mistletoe art, which they had for so many years, and other activities. And I've been on the board until they kicked me off, and then they put me on another one. And so, I'll tell you why. That, and I'm gonna bring up the word rotary, I didn't know anybody in Elgin, 'cause my business was all there. So I needed to get to know people. We both did. And we could do it easiest from church. That church had twenty-two hundred members at one time, now it has two hundred. But it's, that's the way things go. But they're all acquaintances, friends, and so on. And rotary, that was so good for me, because there were a hundred and fifth, no, a hundred and twenty in rotary at its maximum. And there were always sixty or eighty of them dinner every Monday. I'd take time to go there and get to know them. So now, now I know lots of people locally, but I had no way of knowing, just simply by the church and rotary. So I think those are interesting. Probably, the minister wouldn't like me to hear and say, "That's the reason we come to the church."
We all have our own reasons. And what about pads? What does pads stand for, and how are you involved in that?
What is it? People, sorry, I forget. But pads, as you know, it takes care of the homeless.
Right.
And it was running very good at Salvation Army. Salvation Army's location is good, they had a large gymnasium, they had restrooms that would work with them, they also had kitchen, they could feed them. Everything went good, I thought, well, that's taking care of it. All of a sudden, Salvation Army says they don't want them anymore. So now we got a problem. So immediately, there were six churches, which ours was one, agreed to take them for one month. This was difficult, that's, every night, you had...
So every night, for a month?
It was November, December, January, February, March, and April, I think. And that worked for a while, but most of the churches didn't like it, because it's difficult, we were, they're not designed for that. So we worked hard to find out where they could put the pads. Well, that NIMBY, not in my backyard, hit you all over the place. So it was hard to find a place, but finally we found one out in the industrial area, just nearby here. And it's very, very nicely done. Jack Shales did the work, and we got the money and fixed it up. And the management there is just super. But there's one problem. They'll take anybody, as long as they are not drinking alcohol, or they're not on drugs. And they come to the door, they can tell, they make certain things, they know they aren't either of those, they can't come in. Well, that's the major problem with the homeless, those two things. Plus, the third thing is, they, so many of them have mental problems. And they can be violent even, if they're off their meds and so on. So we built that, and it works fine. But now, this year, or last year or two, they're worried about all these homeless when it gets twenty degrees and colder. So last year, we took them, and it wasn't working. We said, "We didn't want to do it in our church," but we did it again, because we got a different group of men and women who are supervising it, and that's working. It's been seven times now this year. It's been seven times now this year that we've had twenty to thirty people come in our basement at the First Methodist Church. No other church is doing that. And that's where I feel that that's not the way it ought to be. We ought to share it a little. But anyway, we won't let anybody come in that's going to cause problems. We have had no problems, but they do wander and they do, they're an out. Well, they're not the best type of people sometimes, but they are, and they are appreciative, they really like it. So, but the pads, I think, I feel that the city of Elgin and the Salvation Army basically have let the community down. I just can't believe the city couldn't find some space that they could have police supervised when it got that cold and take care of these people. Or why did the Salvation Army give it up? What, what do they, from seven or eight in the night to seven or so in the morning? What do they do to the gymnasium? I don't know. But anyway, that's a problem and, well, you know that we cut from five thousand patients at the mental hospital to now down to about a hundred, maybe not even that many. There are still three or four hundred that are criminally insane, but that's like a prison.
Right. So to sort of wrap this up, I'd like you to think about this young man who came to Elgin in the fall of nineteen fifty-six with his trailer and your view of what your life might be from nineteen fifty-six and now reflecting that many years later, what it has actually turned out to be.
Well, I don't think I have any regrets whatever. But you know what can help that more than anything else? Is our family has been so fortunate with good health. We have not had anybody in our family, now that's my wife and I, our four children, four in-laws and seven grandchildren. I don't think anybody has been confined to their bed more than one or two days in all that time. Last time I was confined to a place, it was nineteen thirty-seven, I was ten years old and got scarlet fever. I mean, our health has just been amazing. And if your health is good, you're well, well over half the way to enjoyable life. So that, that's very important. And I'm very pleased, I'm very proud of what Elgin has done, the things they've done, things they're going to do, I think in the next ten years, they're going to see some big changes. Lots of places are going to be built up. It's just exciting, you know?
Yes. Well, thank you, Mr. Glazer, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.